Good evening and welcome to the July twenty-fifth meeting of the Human Rights Committee. It's being broadcast for those who don't understand the full meaning. Our congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation on the ground. The good is long, the good thing is just a small. We are recording this meeting, is anyone else recording it?
Recording in progress.
First item of the agenda is minutes. We are planning to pass on one of them June thirteen from the start.
June fifteen is executive.
Those are executive.
June six.
I'm not very sure that's correct. You're saying it's that. Oh, we're going to get done. No, I think it was.
No, Don is using something.
Would that change to the explained license using the same verbic that's part of the sign of the treaty? Thank you. How do we change?
So open any executive basis.
June thirteen, in the communities, when you study, and the politics, as a parent, and you're blessed with things. We have executive minutes on the meeting of the ladies committee, June thirteen, twenty-two. Now we need to talk about Ninetyth anniversary of the founding of the Houston Four.
Hey, Johnny, how are you? Good. This is the Ninety-eighth anniversary of the birthday of both the townhouse and the garden park. And garden park started making plans for the Ninety-eighth. And it's like the little, the townhouses Ninety-eighth birthday. And townhouse, the townhouse and garden park are so closely connected. And we can tell then since nineteen thirty-three, garden park received permission at town meeting to raise money and plant out the townhouse. And they raised over a thousand dollars in nineteen thirty-three, which is about equal to twenty thousand dollars now. And so we have a long history to bring back together. And we thought we'd really good to celebrate it. There are two things in tandem. And we did have a selectmen in the town, they certainly participated in this. And so every morning, a big thing going on here on the fifteenth of September. They've seen these, they're getting the president members, the town and garden park most senior members. And we would let out the town, the whole towns participate in this party. So without two seconds to take another one, sorry, because we have supposed to, to, to go, 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 and then just slow everybody, make it like, set down the clock. So we've got to say, thank you. Thank you, Johnny. Okay, so this is, this is our plan. We, we don't expect you to do a whole lot. We, we'd like you to participate. So we would like to start off the program at seven o'clock on the fifteenth of September, with a selectmen saying he worked about the townhouse, and garden park president saying he works about garden park. And then we'll start the program once we get something. I'm thinking of asking the legislature permission to ask the state representative for a, oh, it's not, I think it was a citation. That the townhouse is Ninety-eighth birthday, and we have two, and the townhouse and the garden park. And we're going to have permission to that.
I'm having a good job here, I mean, I'm not that familiar with the.
Well, maybe.
Call me a model. Do you think someone, this is starting to get a little deeper than maybe.
We always start at seven o'clock, you know.
Just outside where?
No, we'll be in the auditorium. And while David will do his slideshow, we also have a lot of, there's a friend of the area. And garden park, we have a little man of the area, garden park, he encourages the impressions, except for this, which we are asking the selectmen, if we can take it out of special events, not going to take it more in the shape that we have to, for the townhouse, if you look at your little, the, the river, and the, the south elevation, the townhouse is those older. And it would go better than that.
I would oppose the board, I mean, this would be typically a town event, but I'm also a customer, I feel, I feel expensive, so. So we typically have plenty of money, this is a project, as I've heard it is.
It will be up to a hundred dollars, we'd like to make the cake and water.
Frank has even wanted to make the cake.
I don't know that. Except Pam was the cooker.
Thank you, Frank.
I, I think it's a great idea, I think seven o'clock might be a little late, like John was saying, would you be opposed to going an hour earlier?
Uh, yes.
It was a weekday.
It was a weekday.
Yes, because people sometimes don't normally work until six o'clock. And if we.
You said you had an exhibit, you just say at least the door is open at six and start the.
All the doors will be open at six, because garden park will have.
Okay, until later, people are going to be at seven.
We can't set up the auditorium day before, so it will be set on all of the chairs and the auditorium.
You can help when you can, you can help sort of.
You can say the doors will open at six. But it's nine o'clock, and then the program, the, I have to figure this out. And then after that is the impressions.
Okay. Eight, eight thirty, we've got this.
We'll make sure there's no other, like the library, or somebody.
Yeah, I have to check for the calendar.
Get them to reschedule.
Good, okay.
Here's, write down if the board thinks that's.
I wonder what they're here.
We, we covered the town square, and we told you to get our paper. Yeah.
I thought I saw you, you were booked for the.
Yeah, what they don't know.
I know, I'm just saying, we're gonna have to move.
Okay, so, one of the things we were thinking about was we would like to kind of display the garden park, the eating park, it's so new, and it's so heavy, we only have any idea how we do it. If you'd like to come up with some kind of an idea of how we want to better this.
Yeah, what is it?
It's, well, it's a theme of the garden park, which the town accepted as a gift from Phil Grant, who is garden.
Oh, it's in the building, right.
Yeah. So if we can find a way, if, if there's something you can think about, how we could display it, that would be great, because it's really not too much to worry about, because we're having a big celebration. It takes about three people to carry it, and that's heavy, it's on wood. Okay, so that's, that's it. And the front lawn, if we can put both the townhouse and garden park as a celebration and carry time, so people.
On the side?
On, on the line. And the other.
Yeah.
Yes, well, there's.
You have five minutes.
Okay.
We're not saying no, you're really, you're on a roll.
I, I know.
You're not the best you've ever done.
I'm, I'm sorry. On September tenth, Tuesday, four, garden park will also have an interview in the cabin hall, with every man's, of their families invited to that.
You're, you're.
Well, we're trying, they, they're gonna have a telephone game again. So that continues, and we can, we open the door, so that girl and then like.
I don't know if it's lost or not.
You got a key?
No, no, the, the historical society has the key to both stairs, which is where all of the stuff in there, or the garden park, there, including the rendering of the townhouse in nineteen thirty-two, we would like to display that in a little exhibit at, you know, on September.
It's probably downstairs or something, if you're an exhibit or.
It will be, yes, the stuff will come down to the.
I'm sure you guys, I'm sure you, I've been looking out, maybe even, I'd be surprised if the society wouldn't let, let them open upstairs, or.
Well, whatever, I, I believe that they're, they're working on it.
Sure, I'm sure.
It's, they have.
I'm sure.
Yeah. And garden park is giving presents to the town for their birthday. And as you know, the April third is the town end of the year. And this year, we would like, and fly dog will tree, at the entrance to the village, where the man is, and there's definitely some trees, but there used to be flower and trees there, they're not there anymore, they fall.
Because there, Dom, I'm putting the sidewalk, so you have to.
Oh, if you want a sidewalk there.
Well, there's plenty of leaves there, it's fine, I'm sure.
I, I think so. So we'd like permission to do that, and garden park will also be donating one thousand dollars to the, to the first one hundred people, I'm sure you can ask for, for, for ten dollars, and we're bringing this trip goes at a cabin hall. And then, what does the town, today, give you, the townhouse, because of the present. I know that the townhouse is under consideration.
Well, now, you may be aware that Bob is pursuing a grant, a mistake for windows, just to continue to press forward on that.
Okay, well, if you're pressing forward on the window, before you go, probably with the windows, I, I would suggest that you have a reliable preservation of these windows, and suggest you're keeping this, and you're carrying, you know.
Can I be part of it? Yeah, it's a sum of money for either replacements or repairs, so if you have a name, you can provide it to Bob.
I could call names with all consultants, and I don't have to.
That's perfect.
And, and also, if, if that one, we have plenty of CPAs, and if we can, on that, maybe still a preservation, like, of CPAs.
Well, I'm quite willing, if, if Bob stays on, he's a good choice, he'll be a valuable person. About, about.
Well, we might be able to use that for something, we couldn't be CPA before, I, I'm.
No, I'm just saying, fortunately, this market, this money, if it passes, this target.
Windows on.
Oh, okay.
So then, we, CPAs.
Electric plumbing, uh, beef, the, the, all that kind of stuff, out of state, bottom line, and to whatever you need to do. And then just be CPA, for things that require.
So pass that name on to Bob, please.
Okay, and a little, give me some things. And, um, anything else?
No, it's a great, great job, and we're.
Your agenda looks.
Yes, as you know, over the past few years, I've mentioned the fact that here about thinking anniversary coming into the rock, and for the town, yeah, so many things, so, I'll take these ideas and think forward to what we're often doing. Bring one turkey out. And, Don, what is the.
Almost, almost a lot is over there, it seems like.
Now you're gonna make her put that one in the minutes.
Just click that one.
Thanks, Connie.
Now we have a new hire, a full hired firefighter, chief.
We had a, I think he's spot, sorry, for me, maybe not, it was like. Um, you know, Doster, and I think, um, the Frankie spot, we're doing, one spot for the evening, we had, goes into the north, closing, four people provide, and calling, we speculated that we showed our after one, we were trying to, to. Myself and the officer. So, if you have a department, see that name, you went to the follow-on for the county, and then could do the, you know, for.
Of course, to, then you're like, I'm sure, you're, you're, that's why I see that.
Yes, there's posting a lot of. So you have a second opening, well, it's a process, can you repeat it, or you're going to ascertain where you stand?
Yeah, we're, we're, see how things play out, we have a lot of people that are likely to be a person, a human spot, and it also gets them trained quicker for it, so, kind of, it's also wants to do it that way for now. But it's not saying that, you know, show you.
So what are you doing now, if, so if you can give enough to do for certain?
Oh, that's all. Well, you, you get prepped for the launch, so. I also, you know, you can, you can.
So what do you see as the role of, type of, different than what you're.
Uh, there's definitely more, uh, selected, you, the, the, training wise, gotten out to see the fire, and, and, and they're helping to save others.
Weird.
It is.
So, Steve.
I have to say, all four people are fine, the president is very fortunate to have them four people, it was very, very good.
Compared to me, the officers, the train, the volunteers, and the people that volunteer as well.
Going to training after this? Is there any training?
Yeah.
Based on the recommendations of the chief, I moved that we appoint Joe Bowe, starts the program.
Aaron? Still good appointment. Second, they're not here, we basically, what's the.
Slap higher.
Second.
Chief on that is the drought, that's the only. I'll be fixed for water. Uh, it's, it's very dry out there, a lot of our static water, sources are, are very near the ground. The rivers and streamers, though, okay, but, you know, we definitely will be looking at the town surroundings for migrants, some that are working, if we're gonna be able to call, which would involve more dangers, that we, you know, calling, you know, so, so, okay, it's.
I mean, red flag, street, you know, you, 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 you get fired.
I think we're in a red light, yes, but, but the state, well, too, in that way, we live that on. But we, you know, I think something concerned, we have read in Australia, teaching, harsh, harsh violence, time, and products, so they're concerned with things, or resources, and this will drop, and we need to watch, and that, 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 that.
Education is going well, I speak to Dalton, but, you know, the chief is saying, there's a few, you know, it's a common people, nothing there to say, but, we need to be more aware of the situation we're in there now, but, we'll be careful on that. One thing that did come up, I probably speak to that, a week before, we had a conference about the Rockabilly district, and one thing they did mention there was that, when they do go for a care there, they're gonna choose some work, maybe.
Congratulations, thank you.
We have posted for a couple of dog hearings, and the first one is, I will start by saying, it's be over here. The one walk through. The town holds a dog hearing under the authority of chapter one forty of Massachusetts General Law, section one fifty-seven. These are typically done under recommendation of the, of the control officer, the police, or, as it, as a, 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 a,[1508.12]
Linda, Linda, yeah. The other neighbor too, Linda, um, she also was at one, she was at one eighty five Draymond Drive, and the dogs had come in the hurry out acting aggressive, and she misses a train too. So.
So, hearing, so.
So this was news to me until Shelley, I knew the dogs had gotten out, they haven't been getting anything. We were on vacation, but we, we came back, the dogs started out. And then, um, Shelley called, no, they must have called, that the dogs were out. Gets the dogs were out, we got them, the next day they got out, so Shelley called, and that's when she was meeting me, that the neighbors said that the dog was aggressive. And, you know, that happened. Not really much else to say, I, neither the neighbors brought it to my attention, I had no idea.
Well, well, what time?
I was away, from the dog, so I was away the first time the dog was started out, and then the next, the next day, they got out, and that's when Shelley was like, oh, the dogs were aggressive, and, he's not an aggressive dog, so that's why I was like.
He's just a puppy, you know, he was old.
I mean, he's a big dog.
He's a big dog.
He's massive.
He's a puppy.
But, so.
How long have you owned this dog?
We've had him since December.
Since December?
Yes.
And how many, do you have any other pets at home?
We put a dog.
For the dogs?
Is this the only dog that gets out, or?
So in the past, the other dogs have gotten out.
Do you have a fenced yard, or are they getting out of the house?
So we do have a fenced yard and a tree go on the fence, and that's where the massive got out. Just where the tree is now.
And they're a taming fence, or? I'll secure the fence.
It's just a regular, like a regular, no. Not bigger.
Very like this.
Very like this, yeah, oh, that's right. Yeah, and for fixing the fence.
We are not gonna replace it, but we have a home, we have a new sister. Into, yeah, repair it.
Prior to that happening, where the dog sits here in the backyard?
Yes. We really haven't had any issues. I mean, I haven't, to my knowledge, I haven't gotten any calls, we haven't really, am I wrong?
Okay, so I just want to get a sense of where we are here. While that fence is not contained, how are you, do you let the dogs out in the backyard knowing that people put a fence, or?
So it's, right now it's temporarily fixed. The tree's gone, it's pulled up, there's like a mesh over it, so massive can't move them over.
You hear and say that's bad.
I had a little with this, to see if that's.
They said this is a newer dog to them, but she did say that there's other instances that their older dogs have gotten out. Do you have any reports, really, because all I have is the one presented today.
Yeah.
Is there any other ongoing issues with reports of previous dogs?
Well, over the years, the dogs have gotten out several times.
Has there ever been any injuries or damage or anything from those other occurrences? I know it doesn't, not related, I'm just curious.
Well, one time they ripped somebody's gut out from his, and they checked these out of the.
But that's not the dog.
No, that's not the dog. So they ripped out the ring of the, yeah.
And your other dogs at home, are they massive too, or are they just that?
No.
Okay, well, ask the neighbor, do you want to share anything, Eric, or? So, maybe, can you come up, because we've, we're, like, we're totally hearing them, so.
So, I'm looking at, moving in, uh, so, some, pretty ones, and, uh, leaving them back, and the other one, the other dog, he used to chase me up in the back house, and maybe get my neighbor, Evan. He must have, back in the day, um, uh, I played that here, that, 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 that. That's not a video there, I think twelve, eighteen, or nineteen, the one time, they had the pit bull, they had the cocker, they didn't carry it, but, uh, those who liked me, just to be the cocker. Got, got, got chasing, uh, chasing, uh, chasing, uh, some turtles, rabbits, and it's not a big, even so, but the dogs, uh, eventually, uh, there's round and small people. Eighteen, like, there's this dog standing in a little black, which I don't call a puppy, because massive, it's coming, every ninety times, you know, everything. Teeth, the whole nine yards, and, um, so I said, get out of here, and charge it, so I went, I grabbed a chair, and, this is your grabbing chair, and doing all these, as a backup, and my dog, I just walked on this. Backup, and this place, one down, they had one, they had one down, finally, something made a noise, and he looked away, and the dog's in a chair in that direction, and four things, I was, and he was right on the chair, and he right in the back door, right after. A lot of dogs, uh, during challenges, meaningful so masses, uh, you could ask, they liked it, uh, you could kind of be, they're completely trapped.
Fence, you're gonna fix the fence, we have an opportunity to make the neighbors feel safe. You know, reports that they haven't seen in the past month, so maybe there is a gap hole. But Shelley is going to go and check the current operation. And then I want to date with you, when do you think you're going to have a more finite repair of that fence? I don't want to pass job on it, I need.
Middle of August.
That's fair enough. So, right now, we are meeting every other week. We are gonna have a meeting on the eighth, we have a meeting on the twenty-second. So, we're gonna put this on our agenda for the twenty-second, which is a month from now. And we'll go back and check to see if there's a more permanent repair done. Prior to that time, Shelley will go out and look at the temporary repair to make sure that it's good enough to keep the massive at this point. Again, with your family, please make sure they are aware, do not let the dogs up the front door. Is this some training that perhaps the dog, like you said, she's young, it's a young dog, even though it's large, it's still young.
So, we did get a behavior monitor since then, um, which has made a big difference. So, we had to be a bit.
Do you do training with the dog yourselves, or?
I mean, we do our own training, but it's different when you actually have, you know.
We went, we went over to the beach yesterday, he was running down the beach, he was present with everybody else. Everyone was present, they loved it, I don't understand.
So, yeah, since the aggression was brought to my attention, we definitely have a caller.
So, we're working on it. Or, we may have those smaller. Well, I think we're all here at the same, there was a board agreement about, you satisfied?
As a, as a, as a general, I just think, yeah, we'll play the similar discourse as we do with the, where it should be careful.
We have a second dog hearing.
This is our neighbor Rockwell, who lives at three low circles.
Yeah, the owner of that, he is.
It's Jeffrey Twining.
Hello.
I got Jeff.
I am.
All right, please have a seat.
Sure, he's been hard to hear, so I'm very hard to hear.
And you are?
His son. His only one. Uh, Scott Twining.
My name is Michael, I'm with me.
Alright, so, Mr. Twining, uh, again, we operate under, as you may, if I wasn't loud enough before, we operate under chapter one forty of Massachusetts General Laws, section one fifty-seven, responding to a dog complaint. Uh, we have been notified that there is an issue with the dog in your house. And I'm going to let Shelley explain why we're here.
Um, Dea has called.
Dea?
Rockwell, right there, three low circle.
Yes.
About her neighbor's dog that was acting aggressive towards her, uh, in her backyard through the fence. So, I went over there, and I saw how the dog was acting. Um, it's just put up with, um, wire with T-post, so it is very flimsy. I mean, it's great that you put a fence up, you know, that was great, just, to me, if you put four-by-fours in it and held the fence with that, then it would be much stronger. But the dog was acting aggressive towards me, and she finally yelled at it, and it finally did run away. And I went over and talked to Jeffrey, and, um, you know, asked him about putting a stronger fence in. So, that's why we're here.
Uh, what type of dog is it?
She's an English master.
Oh?
Uh, she's about a year and a half. Right, I just over two. She just turned, she just turned, we adopted her when she was just a little old, like, yeah.
Rescue, or?
Um, one of my CNAs that I worked with, she had two, and she couldn't eat Gemma anymore, she had Gemma and Jackson, both sides of an arky. But, uh, so, my son got out of the Navy, and he always had dogs. And I said, I can't be a dog myself, and my promise got, when we get out, we get, Gemma just came out, and we're like, sure, we love that.
Has the, uh, has the dog escaped the yard?
Never.
Any word to that?
I, no, just a DNA tip in her backyard without the dog barking, ever.
Okay, at this point, noisy, okay, and I'm going to take it over here to you.
It's not the noise, I have a video of how aggressive this dog is. I can't even sit on my steps, I can't even on my step, I can't. Just like this little aggressive, this dog is, literally, she runs up and down the fence, she smiles, she's jumping on the fence. I am scared to death to be in my yard. I have to go get a butcher knife, and I can put your knife out with me, so I feel secure. I've got my niece and nephew coming from Utah coming to stay, I'm afraid that she's gonna kill me. If that dog gets out, she'll kill me. She can kill me, she's that aggressive, I am scared to death. My blood pressure goes way up as soon as she's out, she sees me sitting on my steps, and my feet put my board away, and she's out there at the fence. Barking and growling and at the fence, literally, pacing and running up and down the fence. I am scared to death, this dog, she's up, I'm like eight and a half.
I witnessed the dog being aggressive, you are supposed to, thank you, a neighbor, or? Correct, I live a few miles down. Has the dog, is the dog adjacent to you, or just you heard, uh, you can hear it, or it's in there? Jeff, how do you feel about this? I mean, is there a way that the dog can be more under control? You?
I can answer how I feel about this, and, um, we've had Gemma since February eighth, twenty-twenty-one. We let Gemma go out, I actually built a fence for my other son's dog, who visits from Boston. And he would visit, see if he can, you know, she'd go out and fight with us, I'd be in the yard, we didn't even have Gemma yet, so the fence has been there that long. Um, we would let, for sixteen months, we would just let Gemma, you know, she would bark, she gotta go pee, or she would bark, I just wanted to go play. She sniffs around the yard, no problems, other issues. I have neighbors to the left, neighbors to the right, then to the back, and to the front. So, for sixteen months, up until June ninth, at nine forty, nine forty-six at night, this wasn't a problem. So, now on June ninth, Miss Rockwell came home, Gemma's out peeing, because I had to go to work, we let her out, I might go pee, or whatever. At quarter ten, it was pitch black over there, Gemma's already out, she came home in a hurry, it was loud, kinda, not really loud. But, uh, Gemma started barking a lot of times. And I have the video of that night, and there's the audio that's included, and I'd like to play that, if I may, and I.
Well, I can show you my video.
Yeah, I don't know if we have the facilities for that right now, but I'm just saying.
I do, though.
I understand.
That's what I brought, and, and.
I didn't.
You don't have to see any video, you just have to hear the audio of what came out of this Rockwell, well.
It doesn't matter about people.
Well, I'm speaking, and I didn't interrupt you.
I go back to what Mr. Davenport said, it was great when these are civil, let's try and keep it that way, please. Okay, don't put the hand up to her, really, she's got a chance to speak. So, I'm saying, have there been occasions where your dog, you feel barks excessively at the neighbors?
Not without provocation.
Excuse me, I'm one of the neighbors, I'd like to speak out.
You will get a chance, okay, just, small, please, enough of my hand up to move it out, trying to keep it in order here, okay. So, let me go back to Shelley, Shelley, have you witnessed any exorbitance from the dog?
Well, I, I was in the backyard, and she was acting aggressive towards me, I was at the fence with her. And she was barking, and then Dea finally yelled at her, and she did run away.
Is it a fairly secure fence?
Well, no, no, it's not, because it's just T-post, it's very flimsy. As I said, if you put four-by-fours and put the fence against that, then it, I don't think the dog can go over it, this way, she could push right over.
Is it chain link, or chicken wire, or?
No, it's not chicken wire, it's strong, it's like two-by-three, you know, like.
Garden fence.
When you say T-post, are there all those metal ones, those temporary metal ones for gardens?
Yeah.
So, they could be more of a permanent structure.
Right.
So, on the wire itself, we actually do have it pinned to the ground with, um, anchors, so there's no way to, kind of, lift the fence up to take it out of the ground, or to take it out, you have to lift it out, and then you have to fall over. But it's still those, those thin metal temporary gardens.
I think it's probably.
Green ones. Also has other roses, that's aggressive.
With the triangle on it, and then three feet in the ground. They're used everywhere, I mean, for cattle, for six-hundred-pound cows, for lots of, so. And again, like I said, that fence has been there longer than you've had Gemma. Gemma, again, since we've had Gemma, up until June ninth, not a word, not a hey, not a hiss, nothing. June ninth, when she came home in its state, that's when everything started, and from June ninth, it's been hell. I now wait, she's on her back deck, Gemma gets up in the morning, we get up same time, I'm eleven, seven, so. So, I'm up early, but I'm working, and Gemma's up, first thing we have to do, you know, the journey, we gotta go pee, that's our big thing. If I go to the back deck and I see her, I'm just, Gemma hang up. What I tried to do was try and, for going into her house to get another cup of coffee, Gemma, come on, let's go, she's going in the house, I know she's wanting to get a coffee, go back out, another one. She's there for two hours, I can't wait for Gemma to do not pee for two hours. So, there are times where I'm already out in the yard, and she comes out, she sees us, and she ends, and, uh, beats her door. Gemma doesn't bother her, but if she slams the door, so Gemma hears the door slam, she'll go over and start barking at her. Gemma only barked at her when she's provoked. There was a time where we were coming down the stairs, and she was skimming the top of her pool, like, supply, soon as we hit the grass, she started slapping the top of the water with the skimmer, and Gemma's like, what, what? Only eventually provoked, within sixteen months, not a problem, up until June ninth, it was, why all of a sudden?
Ma'am, you're another neighbor, or?
I'm somebody, I live on the side of Mr. Twining, and on the back corner of constructional. I've been, my name is Kimberly Garvey, I've been living in Hamden in that spot for eighteen years. I've known Jeff and his dog Gemma since day one, he came over, he introduced, deuced the dog to the neighbors, said, this is my new dog. The dog is the sweetest dog that you will ever know of, it's a big dog, people act like it's aggressive, it's not. Um, Scott walks the dog all the time, the dog will wanna come up and help me pet him, he's lovable, I've never had a problem with him, none of my neighbors have had a problem with him. He is, um, I'm not understanding why she needed a butcher knife, but, um, I'm here to say that I had two dachshunds at one time, and they were barking. And I was told by several neighbors that she was blowing a dog whistle because she didn't like my dog's barking. Um, I don't know if she's doing that to Gemma and making him aggressive to go get and bark towards her, or what is going on. But about ten years ago, she also did own a bull massive that would come up through Jeff's yard before he had a fence up, trample through my garden, pee on my flowers. And one time, it went after my two dachshunds, I threw the two dachshunds in the house, turned around, slammed the door, and the dog knocked me over on my ass, excuse my language. There, but maybe she wasn't walking their dog, Scott walks that dog every day, he knows everybody in the neighborhood, everybody in the neighborhood has dogs. When I approached her about it, her question, her answer to that was, there's no leash law in hand, get over it. She doesn't try to reconcile with you to make things better, and I have also witnessed her slamming her pool skimmer on the side. I live in the backyard, we're at the pool at summertime, I work at HWRSD, in the school system, I have the summers off, I have seen her try to get the dog going, and yes, the dog's gonna bark. He's a dog, he's trying to protect his neighbors, he's trying to protect the, the yard he's in. Now, once have I ever seen him jump over the fence, the fence is around the yard, there's, I have a dog, I have a chocolate lab, my neighbors across the street has two dogs, the neighbors next to them have two dogs, everybody has dogs. She's the only one that has problems with neighbors' dogs for some reason, and I don't understand it, the dog did nothing, he's a beautiful dog, and I don't think that he should be locked up or have to be, not be able to sniff around his own yard, but she has a problem with people's dogs.
I would like to say something, this is the first time that I've heard anything about my dog, and when she's just waiting for a bite.
Oh, my dog.
I haven't had a dog in ten years.
Yeah.
I know, your son did.
Ten years ago, she had a dog.
Okay, okay, please, please, we have a current thing, what happened ten years ago?
And if I'm skipping my pool, I have every right to be in my backyard, and I don't slam anything, I'm just getting the buns off the skimmer. And that's how I skim my pool. I'm sorry if my neighbor doesn't like it, I'm the only one that has a problem, he's friends with both of them on either side, I don't talk to the neighbors. She could have introduced herself once to me, ever, and that was it, she knocked on my door, I don't even recall what for. And that's the first time I've ever even met her.
This is probably my, oh, that dog hearing, all, digging all over the place, in terms of whichever, when you have children on both sides, can you both find? The one thing to look at here is, what if somebody threatened, or somebody attacked, that's number one on our list. Fortunately, just as like the last thing, there goes no injuries, something like that. We have here, kind of a different situation, and, not, who starts this, very bad, how do you perceive this?
I'm interested in why you're, okay, I'm interested in why your dog, you know, crossing, and after that thing.
I honestly, I was at home a lot last summer, the first time I tried to pet that dog, Scott had her at the fence, and I, just my English master died. I like English masters, they're usually gentle, sweet, good dog, I tried to pet her, and she tried to bite me through the fence. So, I was like, all done with that, I don't have a dog, I don't want a dog, and this summer, I don't know what happened, every time I, within the driveway, she'd start barking. And then all of a sudden, I can't even walk in my yard without her being so aggressive, I don't know what changed the bark. I'm home all the time now, I was at home last summer.
Is there a way to reinforce that fence?
For clarification, you said Gemma tried to bite you the first time?
You were standing right there.
Correct.
Remember, and, and I tried to let her stick me through the fence, I went to try to pet her, and she.
This is the time that you heard your dates card, this is the, when you called the cops?
No, this was when I knew first that Gemma, do you remember you standing at the side of the fence, I wanted to pet her?
The first time we ever had an interaction, you were sitting on your porch.
No, that's not true.
And I said hi to you.
That's not true.
And you said, you better keep that dog quiet.
That's not true.
That was the first interaction we had.
I would say I would have a concern as well, but perhaps, as Shelley said, for a dog that's only gonna get larger, an enthusiasm, an enthusiasm they can offer, is there a chance that this fence could be reinforced?
It could be, but I don't see that solving the problem, because she still antagonizes it at all.
I do not, I know, there's, the house has video surveillance twenty-four-seven, it's all recorded, there's video of her walking forward towards the fence, onto their property, walking along the fence, walking backwards, making noise, shouting things like, I'm, I hope your dog effing dies.
Yeah, that's when Jeff and I were fighting, you weren't there.
We don't fight.
No, it's, it's just, it's a matter of, it's, the dog has been there this long with no problem, without provocation, she's basically trying to train a guardian dog into being aggressive.
That's not true.
That's, the timeline doesn't lie, the video surveillance doesn't lie on.
You can flip foot it.
Sir?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a neighbor, uh, I live on the corner of Nine Brook Side Drive, we can have the house.
Name Gemma?
Name the people who are in our house.
Name what?
Gemma Cliff.
Thank you, sir.
So, I live at Nine Brook Side Drive, I have a four and a five-year-old, and, um, we've been there for six years now. I have two dogs as well, and they have wireless collars, they lead my dog, uh, they, they know their boundaries. But, they're out, they bark, they bark specifically at Gemma, when she walks by, because my dogs bark at people on bikes, they bark at people on bicycles. Gemma doesn't even turn her head and look at my dog, while she's walking up the yard, as, walking her back and forth down the street. That alone will set, uh, an example of her, her patience and her tolerance, and what she, you know, how aggressive she so-called is. I also have a four and a five-year-old who will walk right out to the road while she's being blocked, and walk right up to Gemma. And my kids won't let me cut their toenails, they're just petrified, they just feel like, you know, they're cutting their toenails. This dog, who's three times the size of them, is not a threat to them, she wa, they walk up, they pet Gemma, they, she puts their face, she doesn't bother. When I take my dogs to go see Gemma, there's no aggression whatsoever, there's aggression towards my dogs. Not Gemma, just a, like, riled up, you know, aggression. So, like I said, I've been there for five years, Gemma's been there for a year and a half, I've never heard her bark, and I'm sure I would've, if she'd barked, if I'd been inside the house at some point in time, but like, that's clearly the most I've ever heard out of that dog's mouth, and she's a zero threat to my kids, who's very important to me. And my dogs and my family, and everyone else's, uh, she's, she's content with, she decides. If there's any threat to anyone.
I think this is all alone, and she's not impressive to the other neighbors, they're all friends with them, I'm not, I don't talk to my neighbors. I communicate to myself, I don't do anything, I'm just trying to bring joy to my backyard, without feeling like I'm getting attacked by a dog. I can't be out there if she's out there, it's cruel, she's never, she never tries, ever.
That's a good point.
I'm sorry, just, Shelley, is there any reports, documentation that the dogs have ever been escaped from the house, left, low suspicion?
There's never been any physical confrontation with a dog.
Well.
The fences make it clear.
If I may, in one of the texts that I received from this Rockwell, um, it says that she knows of several people that Gemma has bit in the neighborhood. And if, if you have that, the truth of the people that Gemma has bit.
Have you done that?
I ask a real question.
I don't wanna get involved, because they didn't want the neighbor to live like this, to be retaliated, and they want to live in the neighborhood. To me, I just don't want that, but I can give them.
Well, let me just go, does the dog ever leave the yard, uh, under, without being under control? Definitely not, well, doesn't, no report of escaping out the front door, when it goes out, it's under reach control by you, not verbal control, reasonable.
All right, yeah.
It would be unlikely in recent past that this would have happened, if there had been a fight incident, it would be very unlikely. Is there a chance, and looking for some kind of solution here, that you could put up a better fence, I hate to say it.
You could reinforce the fence, like Shelley says, you want me to put four-by-four posts, instead, ah, actually, put four-by-four posts, you know, maybe three posts there, is that suitable, Jeff?
I think that would make it a lot stronger, this isn't very likely to be.
Oh, yeah. I think we're looking at the homeowner proof, listing, we'll see, that may be, I don't know, you know, I'm not, yeah. And this, we have a situation here, and to be honest, without, you're saying the dog is threatening you, the dog does not come out to your yard, the dog barks. And I'm not quite sure, if the dog ever barked, you acknowledge they barked, whether, as Mrs. you said, provocation, or whichever. That may not be actionable, let's say, without something that's physically happened. And I'm not quite sure, from my experience, where we can go with this, I think to de-escalate the situation, it's a visibility thing, there is a lot of that.
Reinforce the fence, I think, is a good, uh, I, I mean, is there anything we can do about the antagonization of the dog? Even if we reinforce the fence, she's still gonna bark, and it's just not, it antagonizes the dog.
That's what I said, they won't do it, you know, you don't, you know, if you don't see it, you don't see it, and, oh, man, that, I don't know what your property looks like, I'm not sure. And it's a bit of an imposition to say, you know, maybe just a wood.
The board's not a position to tell you to put up a stockade fence.
Yes, they shouldn't have.
You don't wanna go to this, you don't want this to go on forever, it becomes a record.
Without offering Mrs. Rockwell the option to put up her own fence, that would make her feel more safe in her property?
I don't have a dog, I don't need any of that.
Okay.
But, here's the thing, you say you're not feeling safe, but there has been no.
That's right.
Where the dog has gone.
I'm putting a security camera installed, this time I can take pictures, because this dog is constantly threatening me, I can't walk in my own yard. I can't use my tail, I can't even sit on my step, it's really difficult. It has made me like hell the last six weeks, I just need him to get his dog under control, and if she stops attacking the fence, I will be fine. I don't know what changed this, I truly don't.
Nothing has to be done to this dog to make it that way.
Yeah.
It's my only statement, if that's the problem, that's the problem, that one is safe, I'll do that.
You go ahead. You go ahead.
Because I just, you know, you said it yourself.
Someone.
When you talked, that when Gemma's at the fence, when she approached Gemma, Gemma ran away for a while.
She did, no, I said that.
You thought that was a lie. You said, we, she was terrified. Yeah, Gemma was worried.
Oh, yeah, no, she, she ran away when she yelled at her.
You had a comment to make, you had a comment to make, I thought you were.
Yep, I have no problem reinforcing the fence, um, I guess, really, the problem I had, we could have some kind of, again, I, um, like, I'm sorry, I don't mean any, but, like she just said, I would have no problem, like, having to re-train Gemma with her, because she, she'd have to not antagonize the dog, if we were gonna look at, like, some kind of, like, retraining, I'm gonna get along with her. I have no problem supplying dog treats or what have you, but, I was gonna train Gemma not to bark at her, which I think would be ideal. I, we could kind of be at least cooperative with that.
I think there's a couple things possible here, and you've both thrown up technology, that's a thing, and you both have offered, I have video, I have video. Well, keep that in mind, everybody's gonna have video, let's, in going forward, think that, well, I'm not gonna do something because they're gonna see it, and they're not gonna do something because I'll see it. Please reinforce the fence, as somebody, as a neighbor, I would probably like that myself as well, and I'd say, you don't want Gemma going out, we'll give you somebody a clause, oh, my God, she escaped. For your own peace and mind, that'd be something you could do. I would think that, again, Rockwell is gonna be looking for her security, she probably will be taking advantage of any security that she has. Same thing as ma'am, you said as well, we can also, let's be cognizant of that. Let's try, and I appreciate all the neighbors, both pro and con, if you will, who shared with us, it shows you're a community that does care about other people. Shelley, what do you recommend on this?
Yeah, the same thing you said, the reinforced fence, you know, like, the solar has that green mesh hanging, so you can't, you know.
See the solar?
I wonder if something like that could come out, if that.
You talk about this a lot, I have, you see how I take care of my property?
Oh, no, it's beautiful.
It's beautiful, wooded area. I don't wanna live in a box, okay, the fence that I put up, originally bought it, I think, for me, golden, but either way, I don't want stockade fence. I don't want big white fences closing me, and that's why I would do property, I work in my property every day.
What's on the side, how do you fence on the side?
Let me track this, let me track this back here, okay, but, or pardon your concerns, you feel that, we're cognizant of your concern, you feel your dog has been under control in your opinion, all the time, perhaps provoked to be exonerated?
Corrpect, how I would word it, correct.
Provoked, you know, in this, that's, and in your opinion, the neighbors feel there has not been a threat, any neighbor physically, by the dog to this point. We would like that not to happen, we would encourage you to solidify the fence, for your own protection as well, unless you wanna see is just, for whatever reason, Gemma going through. Right, there, or on the other side, it's just a practice, and, you know, to make sure it's good and solid.
And we haven't had a, she hasn't even tried to move her fence since we've had her, I, I think she understands the boundary more than she understands the fence itself.
Shelley's familiar with other, she would give us some recommendations, hey, maybe you wanna, like, strengthen this up right here, you've seen plenty, and just, they can be, longer enthusiastic. Like, there goes a squirrel, boom, you think that fence is great, and you know it. We run cattle up on North Road, and we have, there's no.
Or cat, crap.
Wow, we have cattle up on North Road, there's no fence, we have out there, it'll stop one of them, it'll face you something, it'll watch.
She has two cats, that go constantly go through my backyard, and I'm just telling you right now, that Gemma's out, Gemma's, I think, it's a squirrel or whatever, okay? I'd ask her to keep her cats out of the yard, they just won't be. I'd ask her to keep her cats out of the yard, they just won't agree.
Okay, well. I'm going to thank you all, close the hearing, you're not a gay here, it's just finding it this time. I would ask the animal inspector to keep an eye on the situation and inform the board or something, James. Maybe?
Yes, sir.
You know.
I'll talk to you later. Thank you, Chris, Eric.
Nick.
I, I know you, you could before it before for something else, I swear. No, something good.
I'm not before. I think it's a beer. It's a common, I, I get that a lot, I'm like, I'm a James, so I get that.
How long have you served?
Uh, eight years, sir.
Thank all the neighbors. If anybody, oddly, proud is looking to come here for a board or something like that, we have to. Never let him go without asking.
Thank you for being here.
No, the senior senate committee, the government committee, something fire station committee.
Her son was on the board of the firemen, he said, sustain my, he's ready to guard me.
Oh, George.
That's right. He's got a great job, yeah.
She are.
Yeah.
They're twins.
And it's something, one time would be nice to.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
That's if you just tell her to sit, she'll listen to you. And if, you know, sat down, you know, you're gonna have a conversation, you know, it's a couple mistakes, but right on.
Okay, uh, next. Bobby, wait, okay. Your government, the block committee speaker.
Government study committee.
Government.
And the fog.
Thank you about.
Uh, former government committee of the Mass Municipal Managers Association. To our right is, uh, our left now is Charles Blanchard.
Hi, Charlie.
Uh, Charlie, you retired out of Sturbridge, right?
Well, actually, I lived in Sturbridge, I retired from, I was the town administrator in 2011, 2009. And most recently, I'm the interim town administrator. And actually, I sat in my ministry career as student, as a white selectman in Sturbridge. In fact, I was on the board and tied up first time as a superintendent in Sturbridge. And in 2005, I was the first superintendent in Texas.
And Michael Dutton, who was a town manager in Bridgewater.
Uh, yeah, actually, I didn't realize all that, because I, I assume my career sort of went in the year, but I'm not retired. Um, but I was on board selection for about three years, and town administrator after that, um, and then town manager in Bridgewater, and then I was there.
So, Kurt, let me get this straight here, so I'm coming up on my eighteenth year. So you're saying I should end that and go into town administration, search after that?
This is not common, I just tell you, this is really not common.
Well, it sounds like that was your path.
It was, it was.
A little more, I think it is happening.
It's really.
But I thought, um, if you want me just to bow my head, well, I'm certainly.
Thank you for your patience, too, we really went way off on a schedule here. And in your, I'm sure you guys have tell our stories.
I completely understand you. Um, no, I just, I wanted to introduce the former government committee, uh, it's a part of the Mass Municipal Management Association. It's made up of, uh, retired, uh, and active managers, there are about ten to twelve of us on the committee. And really, what we do is we provide advice statewide on former government issues, on governance issues. Um, and we try to, uh, bring to boards of selectmen or, or government study committees who have really no idea of what really goes on outside the, the towns of the towns. Um, but try to provide them with perspective and, and some best practices and such. Um, so today, really, I just, you know, I think three things we, we were looking to do, and one is just introduce ourselves. Former government committee is always available, the opportunity, former study committees provide advice, current consultant meetings provide advice, um, whatever is needed, whatever you find is, is necessary. Um, and, um, two other things. Um, oh, yeah, just, uh, describe a little bit of what a government study committee really, uh, does in, in the towns throughout the state. It's very common, um, I would say, just about every town, uh, in the state almost, except for maybe some of the smaller ones. Um, we'll have a government study committee, uh, continue once every five years, every ten years, and really look at how the town, uh, operates and, and look to make, uh, make either no changes, significant changes or something, um, uh, along the way. And then finally, just really sort of urge, um, the board and urge the, um, government study committees to to not be afraid to look at what future issues, what future problems, um, are coming down the road. I think your town is very well managed, it's very politically stable, um, runs well, uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean uh, there are problems or, actually, it's a problem, issues down the road if you're, uh, uh, begin to address. And again, a lot of changes are incremental, uh, you know, but they're gonna help.
That's what I said, that I, I made the proposal, is that if we look at the future, we have great people, we have, uh, most of us, all of us, frankly, all of us are part-time, uh, uh, in a moment, that is. Uh, and, and, uh, we have, in some of our key positions, we have key people that are elected, but, uh, my concern is that elections can trap the most popular, and they need qualified for it, or if they're not the most qualified for it. Especially if you're a guy, it's, it's a game. But we'd like to look at those, uh, positions, and obviously, I mean, we've got a string line, you know, and every, every city in town, I would say, is one more, and it's, uh, you know, things to do, I would say, that, uh, in the budget, especially in the population, in five thousand, you know, so, that's what I said. But the government study committee, I bet you, what do you think the makeup should be?
Well, I mean, I think it's good, obviously, now people are interested, know a little bit about the government in Sturbridge. I've actually gone through, uh, one of the, every five year, the, the chat, and they point, well, you know, it's really, you know, like to do that. And it's been home meetings, here for meetings, so, including here, um, you know, discussions of that, and, uh, we want whether committees can have an important or a fall, so, I, I think the, the biggest thing for, uh, is it definitely will end up, and then learning more about it and finding out how well government works, and changing that.
Now, how would you think it takes to put, to do it, like, what?
I think, I think it can take anywhere from, uh, six months, I've seen, uh, other study committees last for two years. It's not, you're asking, especially if you haven't done one in the, in the, uh, several past, um, there's a lot to talk about. You're really, you're really sort of taking a look, unless you decide to narrow it down, you're really taking a broad look at the governance of town. And, you know, that might include the boards, your committees, elected positions, appointed positions, um, personality issues is, is sort of one that, that we tend to really, uh, urge communities to, to, as you say, streamline and, and make more efficient, uh, because of the incredible work that you're associated with, uh, and form people. Um, but, but going back to your, uh, who should be on it, I think, um, obviously, you want a good cross-section of town. Um, and you probably want to bring people in who, um, who may not, you know, who are, uh, what's the word, what? Uh, just may, may not be so inclined to support any government change at all. Um, because I think you need all those voices in the room, especially if you're going to go to a town meeting and propose a change. And if you're asking me to support, I think you need everybody, uh, on the government study committee, you know, doing the drawing, people on the government study committee, you know, in line with, that's what I'm trying to do.
So first time, like, not a, you said, for, I won't say novices, but they have to have a big scene, which means, uh, that they, if you do that, that, like, it's a, people's, well, get seven, you do, or the better. Because we're missing knowledge, we need to do that. Other than that. But there's time, if you, if you want a good cross-section, because we do this, you know, I said, it's, it's very apparent, they want that the section is very apparent, the optics is rough. That's not the same old same. We've all come from small towns, but it seems like the same old, the same fifteen people doing everything. And you can say, well, it's the same fifteen people that are all involved here, because they're all here. But you have to act with that, oh, you know, come on, or whatever. But then you want to open it up, to just going and have people that know what coverage this stuff is in, and not all social.
I think that's a good point, I think we're, it's a period of, right, it's a, in a period of time right now where people are so pressured with work, um, you know, uh, many people have multiple jobs or work a lot of overtime, um, and the old, the old ways of, of, uh, civic engagement and volunteerism, um, aren't there as much? But I think we, you know, look at it as, um, you should reach out to people, um, and, and grab people where you find them, um, and, and be proactive about recruiting people, um, to commit that, that, that's important.
So, we put the committee together, we have seven people, or, or, uh, I think, uh, uh, and we go off to work and we can help, we do community charity, or send us an email, or, I'm sure that would be, uh.
With me? No, no, unfortunately, no. Um, no, and as I say, you know, we're, we're a group of, of active and retired managers who've, uh, got a whole different array of experiences. Um, we've got some that have managed in, uh, out of the United States, um, for a period of time, we've got some that manage cities. Um, we've got some that, um, you know, that, that, uh, managed, uh, open town meetings, representative towns, so it's really quite, you know, like, so, so we're happy. You know, really what we're trying to do is make sure that, that, um, you know, cities and towns that are endeavoring to do a government study committee or a part of a new, uh, committee really, you know, find a focus and, and now, and, and coordinate, um, and, and we want to help, but focus that. Not that, you know, every town has its issues, every town has its, its unique, um, unique little situations, but, but there are broad communities that really can, you can sit down with government study.
Are you seeing towns, just, uh, on the other side, where they're, they're having trouble finding people to keep position, or treasure, or, or, people, or, or?
I, I think that's pretty much it.
No, they handle that.
Not just small.
They're, they're, oh, like, right, right base, or sharing, or like?
Um, I, just judging from what I've seen, uh, you see towns, uh, putting, uh, we put people through schooling. Uh, education was very great on education, we tried to put them in the ladder, of hopes, um, which means that we got sort of a whole panel of people that are ready to move up into positions. That takes a lot, uh, and again, it's not like it used to be, uh, but it takes a lot. I, um, I was town administrator, uh, on larger vineyards for, um, a period of time, and, um, I often, I, I was a proponent of trying to consolidate and, and, um, regionalize all the services, there's six towns in my district, you know? Um, and it's a real challenge to try to get people to cross town lines and do things together, as we know all that. Um, but I always said, you know, margin, especially now with the housing process out there, you, you don't grow six town counties out there, you don't grow six electors, you don't grow six presidents, or assessors, especially assessors. Um, so you have to start thinking creatively about how you can do things. Um, and, you know, educating people that are interested, it's, you know, to break it, you know, you cover the cost of the education, uh, in New York. Um, consolidating, you know, make, creating two part-time positions in smaller towns, sometimes it makes sense. Um, you know, creating, um, you know, council of government, uh, position that can serve multiple towns, as many of those, those, these are happening. So, yeah, really multiple approaches.
I'm sorry?
Yes, he was, uh, he. He had a personal issue with his dad.
Yeah, we had an issue today.
Information that he has, was contacted about happening for this.
We had a Zoom session on Friday, and I explained to them that Rick was gonna step in and sort of oversee the establishment of the committee and try and steer the committee. Uh.
And Rick.
He's our moderator.
Moderator. Again, it's like, you know, it's been a year as well. One of the call.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that also be, um, with your experience, is what, what you think, uh, needs to be done for the next step, I think. When I started in tax, and I was the first, you know, town administrator, they really hired someone just, um, under that section of that term law that allowed was to go delegate as much as little of the authority that wanted to. And, um, it's, once it worked out pretty well, I mean, after a few years, um, they got more comfortable with the idea that more of the day-to-day stuff could be more like administrator. And then it began, uh, probably after the third or fourth year of there, found a government study committee to really put it into special legislation to really, you know, solidify and, and make it permanent, this, this type of government. And when they did that, they moved along to having some of the, uh, positions like the pressure and so forth, uh, that were likely to become, that was a big part of it. So, I, I think that, you know, tax is around the same size as, as, um, as the other news. And, uh, I think it just shows the pressure that can come to make this happen, you know, of, of, of government. You've had a town administrator, of course, on that now, so, you know, you understand the benefits of that, of that day-to-day business.
Well, it sounds like definitely, you're, you're talking a great piece, but it's pretty similar to what we're talking about here. And obviously, you know, the challenges, Don says the challenges, and we, other small towns are basically, you know, just, you know. So, it's something, again, we need to pick those fires. I think your timeline, you've got those six to twenty-four. You have thirty to twenty-four, if it's starting to, that's not the way they charter, they're working on, something like that. So, I think we need to be realistic about this isn't gonna be something, and Don, when he came up with it, talked about a long, uh, it was probably pretty realistic.
Yeah, but, but, but.
Don, of course, is, you know.
But the good thing is, we're not killing new ground that somebody else hasn't done, and we have you guys to rely on. This is what I see, every town is unique, but the challenges are pretty similar. It will be important for, you know, have that experience of a guy.
It will be happy for them, and no, um, there's no one-size-fits-all, I don't think that's important, for, 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 uh, every town is, you know, every town has a two-inch, um, concern, so there's not really one-size-fits-all.
The planning board is also, uh, starting down the path to update and overhaul the master plan, and so, uh, one thought would be that we could go to the annual town meeting in twenty-four and have an updated master plan and have any results that would come from the government study committee.
Yeah, the only problem there is that master plan, which is thirty-eighty-two, I think, plus, you know, five thousand dollars. And the new quote is somewhere, you know, a hundred and two bucks. Free business. That might be your next career.
I just got paid for something.
Okay, hmm.
Well, certainly, we all have.
Thank you.
Well, that's our contact info, and certainly, uh, we'll reset that on a Monday.
All right, very good.
Well, we also suffered the swings in there, I'm glad we were fair enough.
Sweet, yeah, you can let her.
All right, Jeff. Very well. Thank you very much. Certainly, yeah. You do a lot of select orders, especially when I'm with the dog.
New dog here, he's supposed to.
We'll keep you on the agenda, I love that. The dog, it's, uh, thank you. So, Jeff, you're representing Tecton Architect.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bob, for, uh, bringing Jeff in. Well, Chief, do you want to step up, or? I don't know if we're talking about, again, the right situation where we're trying to decide what we do with a fire station this week. We, we want to bring you back here to, uh, bring you here because you had experience locally with that as well, working with some chief poles and your company. So, Dan, what's a big, you know, question this night?
So we got-
I had a big thought.
We've got an extensive study.
Okay. Uh, is it expensive or expensive?
Expens- expensive, inexpensive.
More expensive than more expensive.
Probably forty, I think it's forty thousand dollars. And a lot of options. Uh, and we're trying to narrow down what we can do to improve the facilities, uh, but at the same time, not spend, uh, the, the, I want to go to fifty, twenty million dollars. And we've taken some steps, we look at the report, which is a particular idea. And you'll see that there are certain things, safety things that we've done already, exhaust system, we've updated the electrical, uh, buying a new generator, uh, water, problem with water, we got that done, that, that, okay. So now some of the issues that we have is the replacement of the apparatus and can we put an addition on, uh, for instance, just, we, we have, we have our, uh, I don't know if you see the station, but at the station- Yeah, on the right-hand side is a little bay. And they suggested that they, that bay should be used to be repurposed, you know, you have to put an official bay on something. In the back, we have the, uh, uh, blowfires and the, the anti-fire. If, if that could be, if, if that be put in a separate, we're just talking about the bay, you know, something. Well, you know, I got off the rail, I got off the rails, it was long, and there's something just kind of bad. And, uh, if that could be put into a separate, you know, like a, a button building outside that could be put in. So we're kind of looking at what we can do with the current building, uh, to make it more, safer for the environment, uh, make it more accessible for them, and also to, uh, provide service without spending a lot of money.
And also accommodate modern kind of-
Also find a, which is a problem that we can't solve usually. Because you think they'd be, they're small and more efficient.
What's your door height?
Our door height's, oh, seventeen, seventeen, fifteen.
One thing is, you know, we're standing these days just because once highway law passes, we can use it to, or, uh, yeah, stand. But what Don said to questions, do we really know the scope of the service we want to evolve? And as you said, is there a possibility to be transparent to the end of time if we don't know? Yeah. If we did like a long point, it's had to be eight, ten years ago, then we want to go with a public safety facility. We won't put a bed, we're going to end it at the beginning, that's a sad old money. So we're going to then follow, book a place that needs that, uh, uh, city. So that's, at this point, possible because we have a fantastic place to take it. This is what happened, which, so going forward, how do we go down the road? Do we ask to do exactly our need? Do we look at the structure we have now and say, no, this is what we need to go? We don't want a band-aid, we need, we need longer. So you kind of need to sense. No? It's not one of them says, I think there's really any flaws in, especially per se, a whole one per se. So you have an understanding of your, what your programmatic is at this time? Yeah, are you confident in the results of that?
Well, I think that's where we're at. Maybe, um, we're confident in some of the results, but it doesn't really fit the, the, for, for example, when we did our fire station, everybody liked, oh, I know, I don't know. Everybody liked the way it got set up on the base and they were able to use their comforters, particularly outside the block, I think that happened, it didn't happen. But everybody liked the design.
Yeah, it did have expansion for people, but, uh, some of the other places, you know, especially since we're not, we're extreme, that's it. My first, they think it was probably that was the, uh, there. Yeah, I mean, the unique thing about the local area is we did the space needs assessment, just like I assumed you did. Um, and quite frankly, the results of that space needs assessment, we really did a bigger building. We figured that nothing would be actually a good building. Um, but we went through the exercise and Chief Note, I didn't, Frank Note, he was the chief at that time, um, said to us, you know, our goal here is to spend the one point two million dollars, I think that is the sum, put back a few years now, that, that they appropriated for a ladder truck. It's my ladder truck's fine for what I need, for what I really need, you know, spacing my building. And so we did a study and took a look at the needs assessment and figured out what we can do for one point two million dollars. And basically that was adding apparatus for. And the air strike board was said to us, uh, well, what if we spend a little bit more? And, uh, so ultimately, uh, we went through that exercise two times and we arrived with a solution and wrapped around the existing building. I, it turns out that my structural engineer was still in building, we're getting a structural system, uh, one of the micro bursts after the tornadoes that happened. And then I go in my corner, the mission, the structure was, was built to say, uh, storm shelter, that even in the eighties, I believe. Um, so we were in a good position to, uh, to do add-ons. But because the building sets that having a building site, it would have been cheaper to build an addition on one side than the other. But because of site constraints, you know, wrapping the building, so offices down the left-hand side, residential quarters on the back, and then the new apparatus, very, um, right-hand side. So when you, when you do this space needs assessment study, you get, you get a statement that means, you know, looking way into the future. Um, it's, it's trying to position you so that you don't have to go to the new station for twenty-five, thirty, fifty years. The problem is sometimes you can't afford it. That's more than you're, you're ready to invest. So the question is, often comes up, is there interim steps that we can take? We just did a study in, uh, Muncie, Massachusetts, and faced the exact same situation, where, you know, we, we designed a beautiful fire station. This was eighteen, you know, and he said-
We saw the plan, it looked nice.
And he said, yeah, man, that's not happening. We, you know, this may be what we need, this may be what we want, it's not what we can afford. And all three of those are factors in making a decision about what you do. Um, and so in Muncie, Massachusetts, we've done back and done a whole series of studies giving them options. Um, basically, you know, you can do this at the minimum, you can do this, you know, upgrade with that, and then talking about where that position's going to move forward. Um, you know, what, what kind of timeframe, what kind of lifespan is that going to give them? When are they going to run up against, um, you know, the, the space needs pushing beyond the capacity of the grid? And based on what I'm hearing, I'm guessing we're in that kind of scenario where we're trying to decide, okay, you know, we got this building, we don't want to throw this asset away, um, but you've got to make, you're going to, um, for at least some of it. Is that, is that any sense or am I?
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, if, uh, we're talking about needs assessment, do you mean, versus ten years from now, we perceive a whole fire department? We're going to have some point for buckets of, or five years from now, we're going to have a twenty-four, seventy-handled service. So we've got to factor that in.
And then you figure out the space needs to go along with that.
And then we can build towards that, right, as it's, uh, this year we've been doing, that covered out, or?
Exactly. You know, the challenge is, I have to say this in all honesty. We're doing this for thirty-five years, the very first public safety building I designed, it ended in a hundred dollars a square foot. They're not at a hundred dollars a square foot anymore. And in thirty-five years, I've seen two brief beginnings where you saved money, the cost was there, it went down, and both of those were at the end of the recession. So the reality is the cost of construction has thirty-five years substantially grown. We continue to grow. It never does this. It just keeps growing, it was, it was downturned, it's a big, that, you know. So building everything right up front is actually, you know, long-term best interest financially. You can't afford to do that, and you need an option. And that option is not to go for fifty years, it's to go, could, could be in twenty.
But first, we have to decide, are they going to have a full-time fire department, better fifteen years on the road? Eleven years, our, our population hasn't changed in twenty years, it, it, it hasn't changed in twenty years. And a lot of service is worth it for that, right?
Yeah.
As a board, we got to figure out, uh, decide that first, and then say, okay, if I was this station, and we're now, if it's that, I don't even need to do that, but, and maybe it's not.
And it's really important to ask yourself, and when you have a conversation with the community, about what is support? I mean, I think, I think I'm going to give you lots of arguments why a lot of things in the board are going to be really good ideas to make, you know? Firefighter health and safety is a huge issue these days. Uh, I was at a station design conference, um, in Rosemont, Illinois, just a couple of months ago. And of all of the sessions, three days of, of class sessions, the number one topic is still, after almost a decade, firefighter health and safety. Uh, when we did that Muncie exercise, we, you know, if we were trying to come up with these various schemes to take an approach, we asked the firefighter, we had a multi-headed, we said, well, you have a needs assessment we performed for eighteen million dollars of two-town county. What are your top priorities? And unanimously firefighter, health and safety. Even more than apparatus space, even more than nice offices, even more than a great day room, firefighter health and safety is important. And part of our challenge here, as I said, Don, we're going to do this, our demographic change in terms of, our population isn't always growing, but the population that goes to be, the volunteers, call firefighters, kids. And that's the challenge that the chief has on a daily basis. You know, we don't have the people sitting around waiting to fall in, waiting to fall in. And that gets to have a needs assessment, well, you're going to need the same people. But the reality is in ten years, you don't have thirty volunteers available there this time. You may not, we may have thirty at night, we may not have that in ten years, fifteen years, who knows? So do we grow to that potential? Do we build for that? Do we build moderately so that we can put that on there? But that's a, okay, fine, put some of the costs off the layer, you take out what you can afford. I've, I've not met some volunteer department that has more volunteers to have than they did fifteen years ago. Um, you know, I've worked, I did a, I did a rest study for Van Kaling, Minnesota. Um, the, the, the chief there is, he's the chief of, he's sent by the party. And, uh, and he came to me and they'd like to do a fire substation in the city. It's the time, I think it was a long, it was, he said, that'll help you out with the rest study. So we did a fire station, and then at the back of the site, we did, um, sort of conduits. Because they tapped into a lot of the college, it's, you know, to be volunteer firefighters, and then trade-off, you know, is a place to live while they, so it's, you know, college, volunteering, they, they get places. I've seen that out on the gate in Bruiser, uh, the chief out there, and talked about seeing similar. You know, to me, that's, that's sort of the extreme, right, assuming, so that's the, uh, the volunteers, and they, they really, other opportunities, but, in this conversation, we heard that town manager talked about, um, fighting education, about the, those are the things that are happening nationally right now. I'm not suggesting you do that. I would be happy if my town wasn't too bad right now, um, but I would be happy to move my town to sixty, more, I think, to, to, to try it. Or you're willing to do it. So we talked before about needs assessment. And I'm wondering if that's something that we should leave with, you know? If we're uncomfortable, that, the forest, the literature report, should be a book at the, when we're building on.
The literature report really gave us, uh, building analysis, it gave us a bunch of options, I don't know, we could build it. Then we decided where we see the department and-
We got those surveys from the town that made something that, you know, we're going to take it on ourselves, but we, we have expertise for that. Whereas this guy has been doing it, he says thirty-five years, that makes more like it. Eight months. But again, your experience, I think, you know, it's like we talked with, like, the two Japs before you. You know, they can guide us in that way. If you're looking at something like that, how would you typically happen to? You know, typically, all, all my work is that, so, um, I give you a proposal. We may be a little bit unique, um, in our industry, um, you know, the people who work on that team, they're just, they care about, uh, they care about communities, they care about public safety. Um, and I also know that, you know, when you appropriate millions of town, that's the money. Which, you know, just because I ran an ad service, that doesn't mean that's that. So we want to err into, you know, understand exactly what you're getting from me, and exactly what I'm being to do, and I don't speak to. But we have an opportunity, for, for me, we're a small town, we typically have a, we have a time to call for, I don't know, recruitment, but, but, recapping, uh, the prior years, tax, or, et cetera. We would have an opportunity to present to voters, the chance to appropriate money for services like this. I would also encourage the county administrator to see if there's any grant, or with this qualify for ARPA funding in any way, if it's a-
We can contact with ARPA.
Public safety, et cetera, and that's a possibility as well. So is the board in favor of asking, um, Jeff to, anybody wants to tie the last one? Uh, I'm Irish. I think you're Scottish, though. But the name's Irish, but, um, how do you feel about that?
We're all in.
Well, we're right along.
Right.
You're all over here at nine o'clock?
Oh, we're moving right along.
Jeff, then, could you work on that, get us a proposal, work with Bob, okay? You know, something you'd like to be able to pick up at our next meeting, just two weeks from now. Is that sort of what's up?
Um, what I really need to know is a copy of the, I don't want to charge you for stuff, it's good. You know, what I want to do is tackle the things that you feel have been addressed.
You know, you've heard a copy, email, etc., etc.
Yeah, that's great, right. You have my name, okay?
Then if you get that and come back, if, if you can be at our next meeting on the eighth, that's great, if not, decline second, because, you know, that's, you know, worst case, that would be a, you know, you would be, uh, uh, stormwater, or, 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 so. Let's say, let's say the twenty-second.
Very good.
You know, try and get through the farm script, I'll cut you off.
Maybe, never know.
Well, it's possible. But what's it before them, if they look? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, patience.
Keith, you're still here.
How much of me?
Yeah, huh?
Good evening.
You know.
Well, good tour.
Well, good, like, your security, Dave.
That's my security, yeah. Alperons, you got a lot of them. So good evening. Before the board is selected to, um, to, obviously, um, we have lost one of our full-time officers in May to a full-time position in a non-state place, so it went, uh, allowed us to know.
What did they offer you?
Oh, I'm wondering the same thing. I'm wondering, um, is that a pretty good department there in the town that supports us, so, you know? Maybe ask whether they're a federal department. So, um, we opened up, uh, looking for a full-time, uh, police officer in May. Um, we had four applicants, closed it out, and, um, we ended up, uh, looking towards, uh, this young gentleman here, actually Sean O'Clair, who's coming over from Wabau. Uh, there should be a packet that I think we have sent over, uh, to you. Um, Sean comes to us, uh, from Wabau, uh, eight, eight and a half years of experience. Uh, he has, uh, that, a bachelor's degree, qualifications as have been highlighted, um, as, uh, he's not a, he's a, this physical school, uh, physical, uh, education to his police department, uh, the required. he's not a major, almost physical school, uh, physical, uh, education to his police department, uh, required to. He's got many honors and certifications, um, through, um, Londo, he's an assistant court officer, field training officer, breathalyzer certified instructor, uh, and, uh, several letters of, uh, recommendations from, uh, current chief and the previous chief over there. Suspected, uh, suspects, suicidal individuals, lifesaving awards, um, so he comes to us, uh, and brings a lot to the county hand in. Sergeant Cooley did a background check on him, he was actually excelled, a bottom one, maybe three points in the back. Sean is post-certified, um, the new thing about police reforms, uh, officers have to be, uh, certified for post. Uh, he's one, um, as his name is in A, the A for H is for, uh, personalization, so he does have a, a post certification. Um, Sergeant, do you wanna add, Sergeant Cooley?
No, I'll just add that, that I was asked to do a background investigation on Sean. He's a veteran, beginning from sheriff's office, two and a half years as correctional officer, then, uh, a local police officer. And I dug pretty deep, background, deep through the chief's, uh, personnel of the sheriff's department, everything came back excellent. And, uh, did not uncover anything negative.
Unfortunately, we have Sean, why? Why are you moving, it sounds like he has a great.
Yeah, right, right, I got the big question right, so, uh, why choose a smaller town? Um, so, and people are usually, uh, moving up, they're going to later departments, uh, later agencies, um, I actually could be, yeah, so. Uh, I wanted to go to a smaller town, uh, train a few, uh, senior today, um, and eventually, you know, plan for the future. So, uh, it was mostly family decision, um, I eventually see myself and my wife, uh, coming to the county, and what am I married of? So, I wanted to, uh, come to at least the opportunity to, uh, serve the town that I actually live in. Um, so, um, obviously, I looked at, you know, former union guy myself with Londo, um, I also have a contract, um, and, uh, see, uh, working. Uh, so that'd be a pretty big, um, but number one was obviously a family decision, but two, um, excuse the problem, uh, the town, and the residents, and, uh, major factor, uh, and, you know, in a time like this where police are not looked at the greatest light, and/or who wants to be a cop these days, I think, we have less support than we, we, we need that, and we're good.
One thing to stress here, and to do that, um, is very important, number one, yeah, it's hard on helping, it's hard on helping. Somebody that's on the side of the road, who wants to.
Absolutely, especially in a smaller town, um, I want people to, you know, especially, you know, uh, look pretty comfortable, and I want to find people on who they, that they already got going on, and, you know, what's your name, where you live, um, all that stuff. So, thank you to father, and, um, you know, he's a very thoughtful person. So, definitely not the biggest guy out there, you know, so I like to use my verbal to go and or DSA, and everything that I, I promise, so. Talking to people, it's all that.
So, ask the board to report Sean going to next full time.
What did you wanna put up?
Yeah, so, my father, uh, just retired from him becoming a, he did over thirty years over there, it's a long course, I suspect, I was kind of surrounded by that, um, and, uh, I did my, I went to the academy over there, and did, and have, I, uh, realized that, uh, you know, I kinda rather get it, um, so, um, set inside the wall, whatever, so, I wanted to be more engaging with the board, I think I could have, you know, I was thinking at the time that, so that I could do more on that side, um, you know, interacting with people, importantly, we have employees, that's, that's really what I.
Multi-part question, just, I don't know what it means, but what's that situation?
Yeah, so the best machine is, um, obviously, when we have O Y R S, um, that's the, you know, you're often done, um, you match on what I go on, and, and, so. That obviously, uh, uh, maintained by a level three certified officer, and that is also, um, support with, uh, massive, the opposite of all that. So, if you certify a level three right on, that you're, you know, as well to, um, uh, maintain that.
Bob?
I met Sean earlier, the chief brought him in, and, um, I think he'll be a fine member of the department.
Sean has, um, going from a psychological, but he is actually, you know, past medical, uh, is certified for state. So, if you guys get a point, it's, um, we would start, uh, sworn tomorrow, we'll start, uh, tomorrow, and we'll do that.
Good, you turn during the vacation time, it's a good thing for you.
Yeah, very good thing for them.
So, having heard all that, on our hand, are you thinking of going?
We'll let, uh, we appoint, what does Sean play? We have to read, but.
Good, good friend.
No, I'm not. Sean Claire, doing a position of things on him? Okay.
It's hot, it's hot, it's delirious. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Stay safe, Art.
Yes, sir.
You too.
You're awesome, thank you. I'm like, well, here you're in charge, please.
I am, yeah.
Ready?
I feel good. Thank you.
All right.
Gary. Look at the team. Ron.
I don't know, just, I'm not in your honor.
Walking attorney.
I am.
Oh, that was the other guy.
Yeah. I have a history for, uh, I live on Summer Road, um, been there since nineteen ninety-nine.
You're a little covered, eh?
Now, we need to test. So, there you have the vacancy on the board. Obviously, we had a whole back and forth about the ground reporting, so, we're all here for the same purpose, to make sure that the notice. Right, you've had a couple of people been arrested.
Yes.
And your board is recommending Kerry to be, basically, to serve again on board.
Right.
We had such a good time that first time.
He missed us.
Is that it?
Well, I did, there were some reasons why I didn't run again, but I, I, I did serve two, you know, so, yeah, six years, I served six years. Um, now my kids, Ed raised a point, uh, high school.
There's a potential that the other half of them could be coming before players from Londo.
Right.
Okay, so, not like anybody's walking around happy, not with clothes on.
No, she, um, unfortunately, she's also on vacation, so she couldn't, but she understood, and she's.
She's not a good. Kerry, actually, your attorney, he was obviously a familiar with the ethics part, he's served on the board before, she understands about moving the E W and getting all the, accreditation, uh, you know, we hope that maybe we will work together. You know, we're very encouraged that the parks, like, he's having an attorney on, I think it's, every morning to do this game.
It's a big question, so you ready to do all the heavy lifting?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to work cooperatively with the board, you know, my past experiences, I was at the board protest, I mean, I'm, like, good on him. You know, it's simple, not very great, but, I, I, I think we rarely resent it, and then you just, uh, uh, you know, I, I think, during my time on the board, he's done pretty good things, um, at the park, and most of those programs. And, uh, one of the things that worked out pretty well was, we, we had local operations, we're sending in, in found, a psychical program, cooperation, who's on that, uh, and this ball, and basketball programs, cooperation, we're focusing, I mean, that benefits the kids, um, I think it's, that's not for them. Um, you know, declining, my last couple of years, we had a declining number of kids who were playing or available actually to play in, you know, the school programs for, you know, that type of case.
My question has always been, and I have a personal problem, as Kerry know, that, like, this, I'm partner for nobody here. Because now they always feel partner needs to be cognizant of the entire population through, you know, obviously, many years ago, we were fortunate to have law, ran the youth sports, we gave the board an opportunity to serve those from eighty, eighty of the outside. Is that something that your board is striving for, making sure their program, not just concentrate on the youth part, i.e. sports and camp? But again, something for the more mature people like Don and I, to get out there and. So, boy, thank you.
My understanding that, that, uh, I was, and I'm aware of that, you know, and, 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 after that, you stay, but, just like the last year, I must be. Again, when I was on the board, there was a, a yoga program, and, uh, there, um, I think that's, you know, and, yogurt, he was the yogurt for, yogurt for. He's one of them, and he's best for.
Yeah, no, Kerry, remember, we had the fall festival, we can put it off, and, so, again, there's our country for all of the capital. Yes, the seven, seven, and Bella, but in that way.
Right down Main Street, who's in Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we actually, uh, actually, the nineteen sixty, twenty, uh, uh, uh. Well, we're here late tonight, but I'm willing to, in motion, we'll board to, uh.
We'll move to appoint Terry Ford to the vacant position on park four, so, would you give your remainder of the?
No, I have to work for, uh, to.
So, in the next election.
No, second. All those in favor? Be careful where you work for.
Welcome back.
Kerry, thank you, Kerry, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
We'll see you in a little while, man. I'm gonna be, come on, be, you know?
Just wanna give Kerry credit too, for, 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 for the summer camp, and then, off the chart, right?
Hop in the place. So, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Is either still there? Nope. I'm not gonna speak of, I guess, we're alone. We have a fourth annual appointments of the election waters, colors, and I see, uh, Tina was online a second ago. So, we, uh, need to just reappoint Eddie Rochford, Ben Bump, Peter Duran, and John is here. I'm blessed.
Deputy, deputy.
You've got a resume out there here now, I'm glad, thank you. So, I'm gonna take a motion, uh, to make the annual finances of those four people to their business. So, I'll vote in favor.
Okay.
Hi. Congratulations, Tina. Okay, and now we have the water commission. Thank you, man.
Chair, Chair Plaster over there.
Okay.
I'm six o'clock.
I know.
Todd here today.
So, you want to be on the water commission?
Absolutely.
Thought you meant with my, yeah, way back, one, you thought of them back down. Actually, you're not the first one in the district to be on the commission, right?
Anybody, yeah, this is my neighbor of the hill.
I know, it was at work one day, and then, want me on the water commission, he was like, ah, sure, so. Lot of the characters, so, and Sir John has explained everything clear?
Absolutely, yeah, ac- actually, it's a little, yeah, got a quick overview.
Ball tended to the last meeting.
Now, I'm doing waters for credit, so I, so, I figured, I had, I was tired, you know, a little bit tired, a little bit, yeah.
Well, I think part of the thing, you know, this is what Sean and Greg have been doing, the district has been in place now for, you know, one, one year, you know? It's almost like we're talking about with the senior center, et cetera, it's time to look at things and see if there's something we can operate. Just if we took the opportunity during this recent project, to do some operating on it. But it's, at this point, this isn't a new part.
I think there's, yeah, I think there's an opportunity to take it with the entire system, and decide if we can do it on a periodic basis or not. Center download, you've got this huge investment that you're, I know, you have to maintain, and, 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 much better condition.
Right, and potentially would be application, possibly some other fund, but maybe get the, you might say, well, if you're, oh, you buck, you can take over a few, so, maybe you could do it. That's why we're having a full commission, I think, going on.
So, um, will it help? Are you okay with that?
We have that list, so, we, not to say we're not on.
Where they have the list.
Yeah, so, other than water, I think, uh, I know there's a lot there, where I can be a part of the, changing valley water for three years. And you know what they, on current, he's on, but what year is it this point, you're?
He's, it's called a three-year term.
Yeah, but you can't have your terms, yeah.
Yeah, so I went on, like, last year.
Yeah.
And then.
Is that the, so?
No, there's just a, okay, maybe.
All right, so I'm gonna sit to the open spot, and then, Bob, clear what that, that term is. I'll second that. Well, I wonder, you're certainly out of that board. And outstanding, the ball's, yeah, he's re-upstanding. Although the third, you can get a pass, you know, I think, yeah, the, 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 John's got, we're in order of the house. That's nice, thank you. We are almost to the end. Well, thank you, sir, that was it.
Thank you.
John, you got anything?
Thank you, your patience. Oh, my gosh.
You got anything, or you good?
I G A.
You got anything, or are you okay?
Well, I've been at stores, and we, uh, knew you did, regarding the, uh, the, uh, energy and environmental affairs, the secretary declared a level, level, so, level two significant drought, and most of that's pounding, and required, uh, the drought, so, they're asking residents, these communities, to serve water. And, uh, minimize overall water use, women outdoor water, they can, all hoses and water cans, and, and, out, uh, and almost five P M to nine A M.
I don't agree, does the water commission have an official position?
No.
Has that happened, I mean, we've seen that in the past, I was saying before, earlier, years ago, we were at a hundred percent drought in Massachusetts, over the area. And back then, I don't know if we took an official position with that, you know? But does the district, because you are providing the water, is this something that we should do? I did speak to, uh, Metro Wollman, they are supplying the, uh, water. They're expecting to get some guidance from them this week, that they're gonna pass to their customers if you will. You know, where, if that's something that you would even be able to.
Well, our Hispanic Valley Water Districts, that is a policy, so, our, all of our customers, if you will, uh, who are aware of that regulation. So, what I'm buying is a, is a volunteer.
But we, we could put something out, just, just, just saying that, you know, there's, there's level two, uh, deep, deep, kind of, just the fact that, you know, try to conserve water, you know, so, you're on, and then, fire, uh, well, fire danger as well, just with open shop, right?
There's, there's the order in stow that, that Don sent earlier today. There's, there's the order in stone that, that Don sent earlier today.
Well, like, perhaps, you know, we work with both the water commissioners, you know, that, the garbage there, and again, something from the chief. You know, they really cotton the fact that we are coming up with a red flag situation. And people, like you talked about, there were fires on the weekend, I don't think we have to be, we have to be more realistic about the situation over. It's nice that they're probably outside, but my wow. Fire pit or whatever, if there's a bit of a minute. Hi, Tom, congratulations on the whole board.
It's absolutely cool.
Well, it is right now.
That's true.
Right now.
Let's see if another position's still open down.
There's only three.
Oh, the other, there's another board division, that's yours.
Some days.
John's gonna be in every, every category.
There's also a pound driver on the board.
Need somebody to perambulate the borders, too.
Right.
So, IGA is between Westfield, yes, and us, which again is for the fiber thing.
Yeah, this is pretty much just for phase one of the, the fiber operations in town that we were seeking. This is just pretty, pretty much all applications, um, to national grid horizon, just to inspect, review, and it's the first phase of the make ready program. And this will, this is get paid out of the grant money that Bob has filed for, for fiber optic community compact.
Now, not to throw it out there, because that's a good one, how long will it take the state to pay that grant for?
It's in the door. We got it. We got the money.
The other two of the FAs yet there.
Uh, the other, the, uh, municipal vulnerability money hasn't come in yet.
There's casino money.
And the casino, twenty-three thousand, hasn't come in yet. But this two fifty, two fifty thousand came in, uh, early last week.
I think they're an organization that, uh, all the state law and order. Tom, you must know some people in that city.
Well, I think the only thing going back to this is we've never established who the NLP is. We go before it, at both commuting, with that, we as a board have never established who is the NLP. Will it be us as the board, or will we run the, that, the president? We can, we can do it all.
The board with, well, the board is the NLP involved, the, oh, the director, the, uh.
Yeah.
You are more important.
Governance will be interaction between me and the board of selection.
So, you have your authorization to sign this. And we'll be, by the IGA, the, the, the first phase of the.
Okay, they, they sent a contract with me, I'm sorry, with me to sign. To authorize me to sign. Sign away. Sign away. Are you on?
So close, so close. I am, well, we have a couple of permits requests on the senior center.
We have a folder there, separate. I've done, there you are.
There's a party at the senior center on October twenty-seventh. So, there's two different dates for the?
Yeah. Yes, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, do I have to have two separate comments?
No, it says twenty-third. So.
The twenty-third is for what?
No, it says, here, I granted a one-day permit for these two days. Saturday, October twenty-seventh and October twenty-third. Are you telling us, will be twenty-eighth?
What? Are you serious?
Are you serious?
That's a hard to tell.
Twenty-seven.
Here, here, again, the one day for the, 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 uh, show, reception.
But this one, okay. All right, all right, so what you have here, art show, blah, 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 for the annual retirement planning seminar.
God.
Okay, we'll throw that one away. But I have one here for a one-day permit for the, these two days.
For the two days.
Of the twenty-second and twenty-third.
The twenty-second and twenty-third?
Yeah, so they have a, yeah.
It's not the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth?
The art show?
Yeah.
No?
Twenty-second and twenty-third.
The art show. Then there's a retirement seminar on the twenty-seventh and twenty-third.
At the art show.
At the art show.
Did, I think you mixed up the?
There's a couple days.
Oh, I obviously mixed up a lot.
Right.
Yes.
All right, yeah, but then, of course, we don't, no, we don't. Oh, no, this is October.
October, we're good. Next week.
John, John.
We have a request for the board of health.
You want another job?
We have a request, order of health permit to operate residential kitchen establishment for Honey Bear Tea fifteen Baldwin Drive. Evidence kitchen establishment. So, December thirty-first. Is that it? December thirty-first?
Inspires.
Oh, they want it ongoing?
Yes.
Just to sell, sell Honey Bear Tea?
They want to make it there.
Or make it. Are they selling it there?
I don't know where they're selling it.
Who expects it?
A board of health agent.
Couldn't have to approve on that.
They must have got their serve saved and all that.
Well, first off, I'm going to say, I'll make a motion to approve this as long as they comply with all paying and.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good. Have they done that to be known? I don't know, you know.
That's what I'm saying, it's subject to that, I'm wrong, if they approved it, then they inspect it.
I think it's all up off the.
Yeah, I think it is.
Hold up.
We have no information?
I would imagine that Finn has already done whatever inspection she's going to have a permit.
Right, they've gone from a planning board to.
You know, I already call coming up, we're meeting next week, so it could be on, um.
I think I think I'm on Facebook all the time, I heard that.
Comment on?
Yes. See, there's your social awareness back here.
I know.
He may look like he's been around a lot.
I don't sound like I'm freaking tech going down for nothing.
Oh.
So, what are you saying, you want, you want, you want to cut American business off of the, uh, hour?
All right, we'll check in on you.
Here it is here. Here it is here, the past heat wave, the previous of the cloud, today's spotlight tea, that will sit in the walk of the cloud, hopefully, project, Honey Bear Tea.
They didn't give anything to you, or?
Seymour. Okay, then they go to the Honey Bear Tea shop back down.
All those, uh, kitchens or something.
Here they are, free shipping, free shipping, before you find out it. Blueberry, yeah, blueberry green is my favorite. Silence, here we go. Let's, uh, get the phone number for Honey Bear Tea, it's spelled on a five, six, 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 oh, four, oh, for your order.
Amy, you want to call right now?
You want to table it for two weeks? Yeah. You're starting already?
As a board of health concern, you know, I want to make sure that.
How do you feel?
How I feel? If, I don't.
You were drawing it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm drawing it.
I'm considering it.
All right, well, we got, we got twelve to go.
Now, we have a plan maintenance agreement for.
Yeah, the senior center.
What are these?
These are your comments.
Okay, yes, the plan maintenance agreements.
Maintenance agreement for generator, okay?
It's, I know, it's annual, it's not like they give you a deal of five or six years, so, what, you're annualizing?
Definitely done. It's in the budget.
I don't know if it is.
Oh, we have the town minister report.
Uh, I don't have a lot that we haven't covered already, other than to point out that we're coming to the end of the line with the shared conservation group. And I have a, a municipal agreement, uh, that I'm going to send on to you. And it looks like, um, we're going to wrap this up and actually have another shared agreement, uh, with, uh, in this case, it'd be, uh, Munson, Long Meadow, and, uh, Andy.
I think as we heard from, um, Mark Green, he was coming to, uh, to change the, uh, what's been not more shared.
Another thing is, at the very bottom of my, uh, report, I have a comprehensive list of all the names that have been suggested for the government study committee. And then lastly, I have updated our, uh, ARPA funds and grant funds, I pass this out to you. I just want to go through this quickly, so, uh, we don't have any misunderstanding. Uh, at the top, you'll see that the ARPA total will be one million, five, fourteen. I'm including the water project, I'm including the tasers for the police department, fire department generator, the phone system switches, the, uh, regional school system capital, uh, the water department pump and well repairs, the SRO at Green Meadow School, and the excavator. The total there is eight oh nine, six, five, four, leaving seven hundred and five thousand unallocated. If you want to cover, um, any other, any other, uh, expenses, we can do that. In fact, there's, there's a section in the reporting, uh, format for ARPA funds for contracts, so we can actually use ARPA funds for contracts. And then I listed down below stuff that's either already grant funded or in the pipeline. Our dispatch consolidation grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, has been approved for the second year and awarded. Shared health grant, uh, also two twenty-nine for the second year. Um, we have not made any decision about the crosswalk and the lighting. We have ordered the lighting, uh, I was thinking that on the, at the next meeting on the eighth, we can discuss the crosswalk, uh, the sidewalks, and, um, see where the board stands with all that. Uh, the Main Street sidewalk, uh, is in the bond, I looked at it today, it's there, um, that's one point three million. Um, the sidewalk on Allen and Summers is not funded, but I've been told by the gaming commission, as I mentioned to the board last week, it is fundable if you choose to go in that direction. We could also get money for tip design, if you agree to that. The police, uh, bridge academy, I had that under ARPA, but I've taken it out because the gaming commission, they will cover it, yes. My last conversation, as I mentioned, they have an abundance, they have an abundance of funding, and, and they are concerned.
You're a loser.
And they said that they're inventing a new category this fall for police training.
There are plenty of money, because we don't mail out the money there.
They keep it all, yeah. Uh, it looks like the town hall windows are in the budget, if the governor chooses not to veto. Uh, the East Main Street Bridge is designed, um, and we had a, we had a grant for that. Fiber optic broadband is not only awarded, but the money is in the door. Uh, the one-stop grant for the master plant at seventy-five thousand is pending, we will not hear on that until the fall. Uh, the municipal vulnerability second year and last year is another hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, and then we have the Rockadundy Road Bridge, which, uh, those who are on the call, the state has found that it's defective. They're going to design, and they're going to pay for whatever they choose to do, either repair it or build a new bridge.
But again, I love the fact they hadn't even decided, maybe it could be repaired, we've already got ten people from the consulting.
I counted fifteen people on that call.
Yes.
Uh, all sitting there, not knowing what to say or do. And the South Road Bridge design has been, uh, funded and awarded, and I didn't include this on the list, but it's going to go on. The, the opioid settlement grant is also coming our way. It, it should be a grant over a five-year period between two and three thousand dollars.
Why, why, why we're at the state, it's some bridges, why can't they do, leave the inwards too?
It's longer than.
And it's, it's the main road.
Exactly, exactly, I have the contact with district two.
Yes.
Uh, in North Hampton, and, uh, at, at the top of my list this week to, uh, make the call and tell them, we're all ready to go, come up with some money.
Yeah. It's our bridge.
That's the report.
Thank you, so. All right, uh, heading to selectmen reports. And I think we need to, really, we need to speak to Bob, because Bob's got a big meeting on Wednesday. And we need him to lobby for more money for him.
Yeah.
Want to hang out later?
What?
Want to hang out later?
No, no, actually.
I thought you were.
Well, he's got COVID.
Man, that would, that would be a chance.
But I am going to be, uh, having a meeting with Senator Lesser, basically to thank him and to reassure him, uh, that we, we love him. And, uh, given that he is, basically, he has put nearly two million dollars, uh, in the state budget. I looked around in the other communities, the most I saw was a hundred thousand. Um, so, and, uh, well, that's.
Restoration Commission, yes. They got their, their first hearing view of the combination for five thirty, and, uh, also, uh, was still the view of the apple thing, of the, of the special. And then after that, they have to do a walk with the, with the, with the state office, that's what they're calling it.
Bob, we finally kicked one, uh, the slowest, uh, to land hall, because.
I think we're good there.
Amy, you, you know about those leaves, about the early boys?
I, I, I printed them for you.
We can, we can, we can choose to lower the hour, but I'd like to let you know, you know, what you guys are doing.
She was making two separate times to be up here, as well to explain the last, you know, time to fly off and on to.
Well, we did that recommendation there.
And she was here in a, again, in a, in a, in a, talking. I appreciate everyone's patience on that and education we all got. So, is there anything else to come to put aboard?
We'll adjourn, we adjourn. Second.
All those in favor? Hi, John?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you all.